Mayor Dorsey.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
All right, City Manager Jeff Knighton has details for us about the interview process tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council and members of the public. We will go through the interview process tonight as outlined in the city's protocol manual. Each interview will take no more than thirty minutes, but can be shorter as necessary, and we will draw the interview order at random, and we'll do that in a moment. But first, I'd like to ask that all the candidates, we have a table outside in the main civic center, actually two tables with pitchers of water out there in order to preserve the integrity of the process, and so no one gains an advantage during the question and answer session. And I would also request that the meeting not be streamed on your phone. So if the candidates could step outside, that would be terrific. And the random order needs to be drawn or performed by the city clerk, so I will hold the bucket here. Donna made me promise not to hold it too high, so I'll hold it and she can draw the names.
Need a ladder, Donna?
You're a good vantage.
You ready to write?
Yep.
Four, so George Blush is four.
Yep.
Isn't it? Here.
Yeah. Well, yeah, but candidate.
We didn't practice this part.
No, we didn't. Candidate number four is first.
Oh, gotcha.
So, yep.
Number six.
Okay.
Number two.
Okay.
I'm nervous. Number five.
Okay.
Number three. Number one.
Okay. Thank you, and for the council's information. For the council's information, the order of interviews will be Mr. Dean Jewitt. Second will be Ms. Strozick-Frazier. Third will be Mr. Powers. Fourth will be Ms. Fies. Fifth will be Ms. Vogler, and sixth will be Mr. Blush. So I'll go out and inform the candidates and then bring in our first candidate.
Megan.
Megan Fies.
Fies, F-I-E-S-S. She attended the state of the community luncheon that you guys were at in September.
Ooh, I miss him here.
It's Dean, Tony, Trent, Megan, Marilyn, George.
I didn't hear who was second.
Tanya.
In our tardy persons, just to... What's going on here?
She's number four. She's by the end of her...
I didn't hear all the... Why's that blue?
I furiously scribble. No, it's Republican later.
Sorry, Dean, you got the short straw.
Oh, I wanted it. I'm hungry.
All right, are we ready to go?
Yep.
All right, Mr. Jewitt, please present your credentials for the open council seat. Why are you the best candidate? Why, maybe part of your letter of interest?
Well, you guys all have a copy of the letter of interest. I didn't bring it with me. But I've lived in Shelton my entire life, since, well, at least four years old. Attended all the schools here, worked here, owned several businesses. I was able to start in the telecommunications industry in its infancy. So I've been pretty much in every house and every nook and cranny in the infrastructure of Shelton. I advanced my career through the telecom industry into the satellite industry, and then back into the cable TV industry, and then to the home automation and the security world. I also was able to work up into supervisor, middle management, upper management, to where I ended my telecom career, running five different states, over four hundred technicians, trucks, offices, dispatchers. You know, my duties were hiring, firing, frontline human resources, wage and hour compliance, union training, vacation approval, conflict resolution, you know, a lot of different things that go along with those businesses. Ended up having to fly and be gone two-thirds of the year, which didn't set well with my new wife, and it kind of gets old living on the road, you know, after a time. So it's nice to be able to transition into the construction field, and if I get held up by traffic of the corridor, the construction going around Shelton, and everybody else's frowning, I'm smiling really big, because I'm not having to be in Seattle, or Houston, or Denver, Colorado. So I've, I was able to lead a team that we rewired the Capitol campus. I had a letter of recommendation, you know, when it was, that was a very difficult rewire. That was a fun thing to do. So I've just always kind of been a hard worker, two or three jobs. I don't sleep, so I'm here for the city service and then to basically be in addition to what you guys all do right now. So hopefully that answers your question.
All right, so now we're going to go into a question from each council member, and I think we'll start with Mr. Onisco.
Oh, thanks. Hi, Dean, how's it going?
Good. Good to see you.
How would you handle inside and outside pressure to vote on proposals in a certain way?
To vote on polls, you mean?
No, proposals.
Proposals.
Sorry.
Repeat it for me again one more time.
How would you handle inside and outside pressure to vote a certain way on issues? If there was an issue coming up and somebody on the outside said, hey, Dean, I really like you to vote this way, or somebody on the inside, hey, Dean, I want you to vote this way?
Well, you've got to go where your heart is. You also have to go with what your constituents, you know, elected you to do, although this is an appointment, but you're still working for the citizens of Shelton. So what's in the best interest of them? Secondly, what's in the best interest of the city? You shouldn't be swayed one way or another. Now, you can take that information from the left and the right and assimilate that into your own thought processes and see how that meshes, but you need to be able to do your due diligence and investigate both sides of it and come up with your own determination.
Thank you.
Can you just come over to the line?
Yes.
All right. What is Shelton's most pressing challenge, and how would you like to see the council address it?
Well, I believe one of the pressing issues is the influx of the homeless that we have. I don't think that's any surprise to anybody. I think that that, and let me back up. When I say the homeless presence, just because you're homeless doesn't mean that you have a negative impact on your community. There's a certain set of the homeless that have a negative connotation that goes with them and/or how society sees that and/or what they leave behind. I believe that that has a tendency to chase business away, especially if it's in a downtown corridor. We've seen that in Olympia. You know, you see some of this stuff going on with downtown Olympia, people not wanting to go downtown. Shelton is a great place. There's a, it's a great little downtown core, and I would really like to see that blossom. And there's a lot of people that have put a lot of effort into that, so I would, you know, focus on that and then try to build on that.
My turn.
Yes, sir.
Can you describe a time when you had to choose between doing what is right and doing what benefits you or somebody you know?
One more time on that, Mr. Mayor.
Can you describe a time in your life you had to choose between doing what is right or doing something that benefits you and it might, or benefit someone you know?
Boy, I would probably say that was, would be, in life, I think that there's probably three or four pivotal points that happen, which are, you know, obviously based off of a decision, whether that be your career, whether that be in your personal life. You know, there's a, we talk about, you know, addiction. I had a fiance that was, you know, was heavily in an addiction, and I had to make a decision as to, you know, am I helping or am I hindering? Do I follow my heart or do I follow my head? So it's a tough decision. I think addiction touches everybody's family, so that was a very difficult decision for me to end that relationship and go in a positive direction. Being around something like that or having a negative feeling like that, it just leads to negativity, which, you know, it's just not good for anybody, a community or an individual. So that was probably one of those, one of those three pivotal decisions in my life, and I had to end that relationship.
Thank you.
So Dean, can you discuss the most difficult group that you've had to gain cooperation from and describe how you handled that outcome?
Well, that would probably be in the work, in the work field. We had, we had a group of technicians when I was running the Oregon market, and they were approached by the IBEW. So it's a, you know, a union situation, typically contract labor in the telecom field is a non-union type of a situation. So that was a, that was a difficult situation in how to stay within the law with your tips. You can't threaten, you can't interrogate, you can't promise, and you can't surveil. So getting the information to the technicians so that they could make an informed decision on what direction that they had to go. And our company ended up, you know, in a favorable situation with that. There's another company that I had a lot of close people that I worked with that didn't, and that whole entire company is no longer working for that organization. So you're talking forty, fifty people. So that's a tough situation, and that's kind of what we had to do.
Thank you.
Hi, Dean.
Good morning.
What steps have you taken to prepare yourself for this position if selected?
None, no. Sorry. I do my due diligence, you know. I like to read up, I like to find out what's going on, what's going on in town, come to the city council meetings, stay involved with the community, offer my services, basically gain as much information as physically possible to be able to do. You know, I did the tour of the jail, I met with Chief Moody, I've met with county commissioners, I've talked with individuals, and just try to gain an understanding of, you know, what a city council does, what's, you know, what's their, what's on the agenda, what's the budget like, where are we at, what, where does Shelton need to go from here? So just doing my due diligence and research.
Okay.
Give a specific example of a time when you had to address an angry customer or constituent. What was the problem? What was the outcome? How would you assess your role in diffusing the situation?
It'd probably be work-related. I was running the Tacoma-Seattle markets for telecom companies, and I had got promoted and I had to take over an Oregon market. I happened to be the person that they would send around to do conflict resolution, and there was a, there was an irate customer. We were on the verge of losing a very lucrative contract with, you know, the biggest cable provider in the world. So I had to go down there, assess it, figure out what was going on with it, why were they upset, what got them upset, you know, look at the root cause of where they were at and how long they had been that way. I had to determine all that, then had to come up with a solution to diffuse that, to understand what that customer had to go through, why they were at that point, and it's, you know, we're talking a, you know, twenty thousand dollar damage claim, which is not a small damage claim. So I was able to not win that customer over, but basically explain how the situation had to play out, or we were going to be going to court and whatnot, and I, basically, I was able to resolve that situation in a workmanship-like manner, by a financial incentive, and then basically just getting that customer to understand that I was there for them and to get them to trust me and then to follow through with what needed to be followed through with so that they, you know, they were a happy customer. I mean, things happen in life, things happen in this construction field, you've got to deal with it, and how you deal with it, a good company is what they do, a great company is how they deal with the adversity and how they can make that right to the customer. So it was, it was resolved in a timely manner, and they were happy with it, and we kept our contract.
Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that it?
No.
We can get some more.
No.
Sorry, Joe, sorry. Okay, is there any follow-up questions from the council? We have a little time left. Any follow-up questions? Joe?
What kind of decisions are most difficult for you to make? And describe one.
Well, you've got good questions. Probably the, probably, probably decisions that are emotional or heartfelt, that might be, a particular group might be very passionate about a situation, and so you have to try to determine, you know, what's right, what's wrong, and even right and wrong, what can you do, you know, to resolve that? You know, case in point, where my business is located in my building, there's another business that moved in that I don't think is fit for that area. So I'm trying to figure out how to cohabitate with those individuals and come to a, an understanding that maybe, maybe neither one of us want to be next door, but we also have to be mature about it and we have to work together. So, I don't know if that answered your question fully.
Anyone? Eric?
So sometimes balancing city needs, citizen needs are hard. How are you able to weigh both of those in your decision process?
Well, it's, the people, the people live in the city. So, I mean, the city, it's kind of like probably a 1A and a 1B. I don't know if it's a 1-2 priority. Sometimes a city's needs and stuff may come first and then, you know, it might, it might switch back and forth depending on the situation. Again, you just, you really have to dive in and dissect it and figure out what the problem is. Is it a huge problem? Is it a small problem that can be addressed early on before it becomes a huge problem? Or are you getting it thrown onto your plate when people are already upset? And if people are upset, they're not going to be as rational as they might be had you been able to attack that problem early on. So I guess keeping your eyes wide open and being able to understand people, read people, and then diffuse a situation if that's necessary.
Anybody else? Mr. Schmidt.
I'll keep going, unless somebody else wants to go.
Yeah?
Yeah. All right. We got ten minutes. This is going to be good. All right.
Killing me, Smalls.
So let's, let's go into the homelessness topic, because you've come to the council multiple times and talked about that. What happens if the situation doesn't get better, it gets worse? Would you give up, or would you look at other alternatives?
I'm not an individual that gives up, so, no, absolutely not. I mean, that's when you really have to pull up your bootstraps, dig in your heels, and come up with a different approach. I mean, if you keep doing what you've always done, you're going to keep getting what you've always got.
The definition of insanity.
Exactly. So, you know, and the thing of it is, is that the wheel doesn't have to be reinvented. The wheel was invented how many hundreds of thousands of years ago? So there's somebody else that faces our same problem, so why can't we look at the same demographics or the same city size, go and visit them? And when I, when I say study them and visit them, I mean get out there and get to that city, ride with the rank and file police officers that have a social worker embedded with them, figure out what works, what doesn't work. And, you know, typically, when you go to clean your garage, at least when I do, my garage gets a lot messier before it gets organized and cleaned up. So sometimes it might get messy before you can actually get it cleaned up. I think that we're making some good strides in that. I think that you have the left and the right that I wish could have better communication and not just think that, now, back in the day, in my thirties, I was probably that person that, you know, my way or the highway, and that's the way it's going to be. Obviously, being mature, you learn from your mistakes and, you know, really taking a good look, and again, diving in, what's the root cause? What, you know, why, why is there homelessness? You know, what can be done about it? I mean, do we just keep throwing money at it and there's no results? Or do we take a look at it and then hold people accountable, and if that program's not working, why are we throwing hundreds of thousands of dollars at it? Take that money and put it somewhere else and give somebody else a shot at it that might be able to have a different approach. And it may not be my approach, but it's going to be something that you have to change up. You have to produce results. I mean, you're, you're a numbers guy. You, you look at data-driven decisions. So you've got to be able to take a look at the data and see which direction that that data's going to lead you. Now, I may, I may not be as data-driven, because then there's other, there's other avenues that you have to look at besides just that data. You know, I mean, there's the human aspect of it, you know, what causes it, what can you do about it, but obviously that data and the facts, facts are the facts, so.
What is the root cause?
Well, I don't think there is one. You know, I think that, I think that there's probably several. You know, you have, you have PTSD, you've got sexual violence, you've got physical violence, you've got mental illness, you have the, you know, there's some mental illness in my family, paranoid schizophrenia, I've got a brother that's an addict. So, and we were all raised the same way, so why is he different than I am? I had the same parents. So I think that there's multiple avenues, and so you have to attack it that way. If you just try a one, a one approach, you're not going to cover everybody. You might cover a niche group, but then by the time you make that gain, then you've looked away from this, and now you've got a twenty percent gain on the other side. So, you know, obviously we have an opioid crisis, you know, where's that federal money? Do we have any of that federal money? You know, why does it come down to the churches and the communities and the civilians that have to take care of this versus, you know, where are those federal monies? Do we have grants available? And there's a lot of people smarter than me that are doing some great work, that, you know, let's find out who they are, let's pick their brain, let's find out what's going on. I'm great. I had mixed feelings on this PUD building that's coming in, and I still do, the behavior health.
Oh, oh. In the PUD?
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. I mean, I'll stop that. So I'm real, I'm interested to see how that's going to pan out, but I have high hopes for it, let's put it that way.
I have a question on housing in the city. How would you define low-income, affordable, and workforce? What's the difference between those three?
Well, I mean, you're, you know, obviously there's going to be some federal and state guidelines on the monetary household income as to what qualifies what, but even those qualifiers, you could end up having three or four families living in one house. Well, just because you have three or four people living in, families living in one house, you could still have McKinney-Vento kids that are there because they don't, they're sofa surfing. So, you know, just because they have a house, you know, and they might be in a middle-income area or, you know, two-hundred-thousand house, two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, you know, I mean, they have to do that because there's so many people living there. You know, being in the construction field, you know, I think that we need to take advantage of some of the infill lots that we have. I would like to see the city going, kind of have a permit assistance center. I think that we've gotten a lot better in that direction. You know, I mean, but, but a landlord is a landlord for profit. They're, they're not a landlord to be pro bono. So when you overburden that landlord, like they just did in the Seattle City Council, is that really the avenue that you want to go? I mean, are rents going to have to go up to, to cover different things like that? So, but, yeah, we do have a severe shortage of homes. I mean, you see it on, on social media, people looking, hey, do you know of a house? Do you know of a house? Hey, look here, does anybody have a private place? You know, it, it's all over. So hopefully that answered.
Yeah, and then I just have one more question. About four years ago, we had talked, there was talk in the city of maybe having people that rent houses, that own houses and rent them out, to have, have to be licensed, and the city would come in and inspect the electrical and the plumbing and whatever. How do you feel about that?
I don't agree with that. To me, the less government that you can have controlling something like that, I believe that there's already statutes, and there's already laws, and there's already landlord-tenant agreements that should cover that already. Now, are there people that circumvent that? Absolutely, but that should be on a case-by-case basis. That should not be on the city looking to take that task on. That should be, you know, the tenant should be able to report that to an agency that's not bogged down, which can then address that on an individual basis. And just like LNI, if you're a bad contractor and you have X amount of marks on your record, somebody can go right online to the LNI site and look right up and see what kind of violations, how many people have attacked your bond. So maybe something like that would, you know, where you register it as a voluntary basis and some, you know, I would, I wouldn't be opposed to something like that, but as far as full governmental control on it, no.
All right.
Eric?
So we heard your number-one issue. What would be two and three?
Well, two and three would be, you know, I want Shelton to be a destination, not just a place to travel through. So how do we do that? Let's, I mean, what, what revenue streams does the city have? Is there any way to increase those revenue streams? Is there any way we can take those revenue streams and earmark those for beautification, increasing tourism, working with the city council, working with Chamber of Commerce, working with the EDC? What can we do to get some of these buildings, you know, filled in, get downtown to be like, you know, when I started my cable career in the eighties, Leavenworth is nothing like what it is today. So why can't Shelton be Leavenworth? I mean, we put five-hundred thousand dollars into a study in 2015 that showed all the different things that we wanted to do, and I haven't seen a lot of those materialize. I mean, we've tried a couple, you know, we had some parking things going on back and forth, and that didn't fly too well. So figuring out how that we can, we can look at that, is there an outside-of-the-box way that we can generate more revenue within the city, you know, without knowing exactly what the whole budget is and how we can do that and how the legalities of that, which then I would look at all you to be able to help me along those and give me what you guys have already learned. Third one would possibly be, again, how do we attract more businesses? Doesn't have to be in the downtown corridor, you know, I mean, that, you know, the corridor that we have going up the hill, I mean, that thing looks great. You go over one street over on Birch, you know, I think that's Birch, you know, that looks great. You know, what about some of these other streets? You know, what about Coda? What about, you know, what about Railroad? What about some of these other areas that are just, you know, one or two blocks? People, people come in, you know, what about, what about this trail that goes from the yacht club down into the city, you know? So you kind of get people coming in that way, too. You know, how can we entice that? What can we do?
Baby steps.
Right.
Oh, go ahead, Deidre.
Dean, can you talk a little bit, as we're looking at growing the city, which is one of the things you were mentioning, and my hope would be that we're doing that by design rather than by default, right? We're thinking about what we want this community to look like. What challenges or opportunities do you see, and how do you see the city playing a role in that?
Well, infrastructure for one. You know, I battled with the fire department and sprinkler systems. I know Scott Bernard, I think, probably had the same thing. You know, he had to chop up his building to be able to avoid having to do a sprinkler system. You know, why is it my responsibility as a business owner, building, whatever else, anybody else that has one, to put in a four-inch main? Why isn't the city putting in that four-inch main if they want the fire suppression systems in and they want that? You know, but then again, where does the money come to do that? So we have to properly plan. If we want to entice some of these businesses to be able to do some of those things, then there's a little bit of give and take within the city. then there's a little bit of give and take within the city too. And I'm not talking about tax breaks, cuz I don't want a tax break. If you give a whole bunch of tax breaks, then where's that revenue coming into the city to be able to use? So, I don't know, did I, did I diverge?
Great, thank you.
Anyone else?
One more, quick one. So you just talked about tax breaks. How do you define tax breaks versus incentive, incentives?
Well, I guess it would be, you know, historic building, you know? I mean, what's, you know, if you're on the registry, do you get a tax break? Uh, up in the hilltop of Tacoma, when I was a cable guy up in those areas there, you bought a house up there and you got a tax break on your house where you got taxed at the value of what your house is when you bought it, not what it was when you fixed it up for 20 years. To me, that's a tax break. Incentive, I would think, would be, uh, you know, maybe there's permit fees that are lowered to entice somebody to come in. Uh, I don't know if there was incentives given to Sierra Pacific or not. I mean, you know, they're great stewards of the community and things. You know, so I would think that, that, uh, not having to pay a permit fee or something would be an incentive to me. Cuz that, you know, a permit is based off of the value of your project.
All right. Everybody through?
Now, can I ask questions?
All right.
No.
What? Not this evening.
Not tonight.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. And your, your hat.
Don't forget that hat.
Right? My wife borrowed one.
I got the AED paddles.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hi, Tanya.
We were out there solving the world's problems. I love to hear that.
You ready?
Sure.
Okay. Please present your credentials for the open council seat. Why are you the best candidate?
Cuz I'm awesome? No. Not the proper answer, just easy. Um, for me personally, um, I'm a longtime Mason County resident. I left for a short period of time, came back. I feel like this is the proper place to raise my family. I've been in healthcare and homelessness for the past 15 years. Um, I'm committed to our community. Credentials-wise, a lot of boots on the ground, I guess. I do have a bachelor's degree. It's kind of a fancy, uh, piece of paper that hangs on my office wall. I've learned most from just being down and working in the community.
All right, thank you. Now, we're gonna have some questions for you from the council. One at a time, so we'll start with Mr. Onesko.
How would you handle inside or outside pressure to vote on a proposal in a certain way?
I feel like in any setting where you're trying to make decisions for the community as a whole, there's always gonna be inside and outside pressure. For me personally, it's about listening and seeking the answer. I'm a very data-driven person. Um, I think that probably comes from my background in healthcare. It's about numbers and science for me. So before I make a decision, I really have to research and seek to understand, um, each situation. I mean, some of the decisions I make in my life might not be the most favorable decision, but I make them for what's best for the community and my family.
Fantastic. What is Shelton's most pressing challenge and how would you like to see the council address it?
My mind immediately, of course, jolts to, you know, pressing issues like affordable housing and homelessness and mental health. But more than that, I feel like the most pressing challenge in our community is finding a balance between maintaining our small-town identity and increasing our community and bringing an increased tax revenue. I think that we need to make it more desirable and more easily accessible to draw more people into our community, to grow our business community and bring in more developers while still maintaining our small-town pride. And I think that if we can do that, we can definitely push on more pressing, other pressing issues such as the homelessness and things like that.
All right. Can you please describe a time when you had to choose between doing what is right and doing what benefits, maybe what benefits you or someone you know?
Well, I'm a mom, so come on. I always have to put everybody's needs before my own, right? Three girls. Gosh, I can think of a lot of times, but probably the most current one that I think of, in my previous employment, I worked there for many, many years and it had been bought and sold and bought and sold time and time again. And the most recent owner had asked me if to support his efforts to cut costs, if I would be willing to lay off my assistant and assume some of her job duties. Deep down, I knew that sure, with some extra effort and work, I could probably rise to the challenge. But more importantly, I knew that she was a fantastic employee. She's an amazing person and the kind of employee that every employer would want to have on their crew. And I knew that although scary to weeks before Christmas thinking about not being employed, might put a strain on my family. Um, I chose to put the employer's need to cut costs and my amazing employee in front of me and I sacrificed my employment. So, um, that's what brought me to homelessness, which has been very eye-opening and exciting. And I'm very blessed that I have been able to hire my former assistant, so it all worked out for me in the end.
So, Tanya, can you tell us about a difficult group that you've had to gain cooperation from and describe how you handled that and what the outcome was?
If you asked me this question, you know, a year and a half ago, I would've told you, you know, the 87-year-old people, dementia people trying to maintain their home, you know? But, um, that's kinda my job. I mean, I face our community's most vulnerable population every single day. I mean, I'm dealing with people that are, um, troubled with substance abuse and mental health and chronic illness and they're in their darkest moments of their life. And my job is to encourage them and inspire them. I'm not a hand-out girl. I am very much a hand-up. And part of that inspiration, I have to get people to work for it and try to follow my lead. It can be challenging, especially with mental health and substance abuse. But I'm very proud to say that, you know, we have an 82% success rate this quarter. I really wish that we had 100% success rate, but the dirty fact of the matter is, is not everybody is ready to get the help they need.
Okay. What steps have you taken to prepare yourself for this position if selected?
Well, I feel like I'm always a student and I really try to seek to understand. And I'm not gonna lie, the first thing I did is dig into the city's website. I read so many PowerPoints, nicely done, sir. And I watched a lot of hours of meetings and tried to better kinda understand what's going on. And then I actually talked to people in the community and business owners and our local fire department kinda have their ear in it, teeny bit, um, to kinda see like what their wishes, wants and desires are and if I could be a representation of the bridge between that and kinda be willing to make, communicate and make decisions based on what's good for the community.
So you got out in the community?
I did. Uh, it was, even last night, I got to talk to some business owners. It was quite exciting.
Very good, thank you.
Give a specific example of a time when you had to address an angry customer or constituent or resident. What was the problem? What was the outcome? How did you assess your role in diffusing the situation?
Homelessness and healthcare, those are angry people, just saying. Cuz often people are scared. An example that probably comes to mind is probably one that I've, um, since my change, I kinda think of the most. In my first couple of weeks in the change to homelessness, I did report and essentially lead a child to being removed from a home. The grandmother and mother did approach me with a lot of really not-kind things to say because obviously that is a very traumatizing experience for any family. I calmly asked if the mother was willing to allow me to explain my actions in front of her mother because, you know, privacy. And she said yes. So I sat them down and calmly explained the reason why I took this course of action. And then after many dirty ways, a lack of compliance, a lack of honesty, I did look into our facility and find a lot of drug paraphernalia to include a methamphetamine pipe and a butane lighter in a seven-month-old's diaper. And for me, my actions were based on the safety of that child. That child was seven months old. He didn't have the words to say, "No, Mom," or be a part of that situation. So I had to take action for the better good of that child. And that definitely calmed Mom and Grandma down, once they should, especially Grandma, once she saw the reasoning. And then I helped them build a plan to get that child back into her care and get her in the road of sobriety. So eventually it all worked out, but it was, it was rough having rocks thrown at my car, so.
How did you feel when that was over with?
As a parent, it's very difficult. Um, you definitely have to maintain, you know, a sense of calm and put that child's needs first. But it, some people need that extra push to get to where they need to be. And I really believe that that mother's fear pushed her into being a better mother for that child. And in the end, it was a beautiful thing. I'm not gonna lie, on the way home, I probably cried a little bit because, I mean, no child wants to be removed and no mom wants to lose her child. But in the end, it became something beautiful.
Thank you.
But you may have saved that child.
Mm-hmm. And maybe that mother. CPS doesn't look to permanently keep children away. You know, they want to reunify families and do what's the greater good for all involved, so.
All right. So we're gonna go into some other questions, you know?
Fire, who am I ready?
Yeah, we have a lot of time left, so we'll go with Eric over here.
Sometimes balancing city needs and the needs of the citizens are hard. Are you able to weigh both in your decision process?
I think so. But again, I feel like it's really gonna be seeing some data on that and really seeking to understand and be, continuing to be a student and learn and grow. And I mean, it's gonna be important to listen to people and their needs and desires, but also realize what's best for the community as a whole. And that might not be just one constituent's, you know, want and desire.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yes?
Uh-oh.
Go ahead, Joe.
All right, trust conversations. So oftentimes, um, government gets, um, you're, you're in the middle of the, the lack of trust by, by pretty much everyone. But talk to us about situations where you've had to deal with trust, specifically, um, from the personal accountability aspect of things. Tell us about a time when you had to choose to trust somebody else. What was the outcome?
I actually often, I'm not gonna lie, am kinda guilty of giving people too many chances and trusting a little too much sometimes. Right now, I mean, today, having to trust a mother to make a good decision for her family is a big one. To go to rehab, to go to that job interview, to do what's best for her family and be honestly today disappointed in the end because there was no follow-through.
So how would you start building trust in the community?
Oh, me building trust?
Yep, yep, this is part two.
Okay, part two.
How would you then start building trust in the community? You know, if in the position?
If in the position? I mean, I feel like I have a pretty good, um, ground in knowing people in the community. In my previous job, it was actually the joke of the company, they called me the princess of Mason County, which is terrible and funny because it would annoy them that I knew everybody at a location we went to or somebody. But I think just getting out and shaking hands and knowing people and listening, and listening doesn't mean necessarily sharing, of course, but just being an open ear, I guess, and being approachable. I promise I'll smile better when my braces are off, right?
I know that, are you, I, I know that, um, going back to this child, that had to be a little bit gratifying that, the way it worked out, right? I know it's a tough decision and I kinda believe in this tough love myself. Would you agree that, you know, if people want help, you can help them? But if they don't want the help, it's very, very hard, difficult.
We have that conversation often and I have to, I have younger employees that work for me, you know, that, um, definitely see sunshine and rainbows at all aspects of life and I have to explain to them that you have to allow these people to fail or want to move forward. And sometimes we will lose some. It's that whole 82%. I would love to say I have 100% sex, sex rate, but I do not. It's a goal.
I know that, uh, my wife, uh, works for, been working for a doctor's office for 40, 40-some-plus years. And she has to report abuse. And doesn't like to do it, but it's, it's the same kind of thing.
Yeah. In my previous career, um, I worked with the elderly a lot and there was definitely a lot of times where we had to report abuse on elderly too. I mean, it's a vulnerable population. But again, my job is to protect and help guide and inspire people to be independent.
All right.
One of the things, one of the things, Tanya, that you pointed to was that need to balance the integrity of who we are or who we have historically been as a city and having that balance to growth. So what opportunities specifically or what challenges do you see as we look at growth within the city?
Um, I think a lot of them that I've read are, are being worked on. You know, cleanup, smoother, easier permitting processes would probably be a big one. That's kinda something I hear from a lot of small business owners is that it's challenging to work through that. Kinda just being a little more transparent and open. But I love our small town. I, I take pride in walking down railroad. It's beautiful and I like that, you know, my kids take a walk down the road and two different business owners send me a text message telling me they're walking down the street. I love that. I definitely wanna preserve that pride in Christmastown, USA, but I do think that we need more here.
Um, I have a question.
Kathy?
So in your business, you've probably seen some kind of, uh, dangerous or sad-looking houses that people live in?
I do.
So what is your, several years ago, we had talked, the city was talking about, having landlords licensed so that the city could come in and inspect the wiring and plumbing. What is your thought on that?
Yes, I would love to see a little bit more accountability. But it's definitely, it's a hard subject to broach because I also don't wanna lose landlords. But like, some of the grants I work with, we have to go through and do an inspection process. And I have had landlords in the community tell me, "Well, why would you, why would you need that?" Well, because a smoke detector is important. You know, it's, you know, you know, having windows that are, you know, a little bit newer than from the twenties is important for efficiency and safety and things like that. I've inspected some homes that should be condemned, to be perfectly honest with you, that they-
that they wanted above fair market rent to stay in that place. Our rents are astronomical in our community right now. They're well above a hundred and twenty-five percent over fair market rent right now, because they can get those rents. And they will be able to find someone to stay in, honestly, a slummy place, because there's such a need in our community. A standard, I feel like a standard would be nice.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have an idea of why you think those rents are going so high?
Well, we're a, you know, bedroom community for Thurston County. At this point, we're a bedroom community for Seattle. People are learning that you can commute to Seattle via the ferry just as fast as you can drive over there now, and the rents are cheaper. So, plug in your little earphones and play on your laptop for the ride over, and it's scary. I, I am personally seeing trying to get people into housing. Companies are able to ask for ungodly deposits and fees, because there's such a demand in our community. So, they're able to open the door to scary numbers. Which also has chain effect on me personally, because it makes me spend my grant money faster, which essentially means I can't help as many families, and it's just kind of snowballing. Right now, we have a list of eighty-six households on our waitlist, and that waitlist includes people that are absolutely, literally homeless. So, they're living in the cars, in the streets, or in the woods.
So, you would agree, maybe, that there's a, a major lack of homes?
Because even if we, let's say, all the homes that are currently for rent were within fair market rent, let's just imagine, there's still not enough homes to house those eighty-six families. There's not.
Right. Eric, did you have another one?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
So, say you're selected, and on your first day, Jeff says, "You can do whatever you want in the city." What would you do?
That is frightening.
Just one thing.
Declare a holiday?
I know. We're going to call it nap holiday, because I need one.
Tell everyone to go home.
I know. Tell everyone to take a nap, I'm telling you. Free coffee for the day. Um, oh, that's a hard one. Something that kind of draws my attention, when I was speaking to a developer out of the area, is coming into the main entrance of Mason County seemed a little ran-down and dirty. I think that that would be something, I know that is currently on everybody's radar, but something I would look at. You know, I, I drive a big Jeep with big tires, so I'm very well aware of the roads in the community and stuff like that, because I bounce a lot, but...
So with that, you just need to go to the county commission meeting, because most of our entrance isn't in town, our county property.
You're right.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Joe?
Yeah. Yeah, we got nine minutes. The, the housing conversation's interesting. So, if theoretically, in the city, landlords are able to charge whatever, you know, they, they seem to want to charge for rent, they, they'll get it. So, why not, why aren't we seeing more houses pop up for rent in the city? Why do you think? Why aren't we seeing more subdivisions being built, or duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes?
Well, I, I hear there is some being built, but it's a, I think we need to be more desirable, and I think we're still in that small-town window that's not attracting more developers, although we need it. I don't know if, I don't know what the other process looks like, if it is, like I said, if it's a time constraints on permits, if it's the land, if it's harder to put septic in the land around here. I'm not entirely sure exactly what that is. Or maybe people don't just realize how awesome Shelton is. So, I mean, we do have a mall called Walmart and all, so...
So, can you tell me the difference in your, in your view, what the difference between low-income, affordable, and workforce housing is? If there's any difference, or if there is?
Right. Um, well, affordable housing, what I decipher, should be around thirty percent of the average medium income in our community, right? Would be your affordable. There are not a lot of people in this community that make that dollar amount with our hard-working community members. I mean, you can be a certified nursing assistant, and you're not making fifty percent average medium income. So, a lot of our housing is already kind of low-income. Not low-income, but above that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's a terrible answer. You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Joe, you want another one?
Sure.
Okay.
City carries a debt load related to sewer and other infrastructure projects. Tell us your thoughts on taking out, taking out debt in order to improve infrastructure, and whether, when it, when it's time to save money or pay it down versus carry a debt load? What do you, what are your thoughts on that?
I run a nonprofit. I, I'm pretty good at stretching a penny. I'd have to look at it, to be honest. I'd have to see the numbers in front of me before I could truly formulate an honest opinion. And I mean, it's definitely situational, and really looking at the data to back it before I could really give an honest answer.
Okay. Fair.
Thank you.
All right. Yep?
Firewind, ready?
All right.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you.
Sure, why not?
My heart's just going. I don't know what's going on.
You take it easy.
One more, we get a break.
Yeah. Do you want a water?
I might get one.
Mint or something?
Who's next?
Those waters are for them.
I'll try to.
I'll get it.
Miss Donna?
You can start with Joe for the first question now.
We're supposed to start the same way all the time? You want me to? I don't care.
Tony doesn't.
All right.
Yes.
Let's do it. Let's change it up.
You're going to mix it up a little bit?
Yeah.
Your husband's sitting in the back?
Her husband was the firefighter.
Trenton, right? Okay, hi. Please present your credentials for the open council seat. Why, why are you the best candidate?
I believe that I could be the best candidate because of my leadership abilities. I was in the second seventy-fifth Ranger Regiment there. I got some of the most extraordinary leadership classes that you could possibly get. When I got out of the military, I actually started running a business, and in four years, we've gone from four to fifty employees spanning over two states. I know what it takes to really take into consideration everything that's needed to make something run effectively.
All right. Now, we're going to have a question from each council member for you, and this time, we'll start with Joe.
Starting with you.
All right. Changing it up.
Changing it up.
All right. Give a specific, specific example of a time when you had to address an angry customer. What was the problem? What was the outcome? How would you assess your role in diffusing the situation?
This is a good one. I do security for a living, so I've had to kick a lot of people off of properties that they think that they want to be there when they shouldn't be. I try to do everything in the most respectful way possible, so I'll start with verbal de-escalation, right? Explain to them why they're making a mistake, why they can't be there, why they need to leave. I've had issues where, you know, immediately, when you talk to someone, they get irate. I understand that, so I take a step back, I remain calm, I take into consideration what they're telling me, at which point, I do respond appropriately. I've had guys do everything from pull weapons on me to try to physically attack me. Most of the time, it can all be stopped with just verbal de-escalation tactics. So, we try to stick with that, but remaining calm, cool, collective, taking in the totality of the circumstances, and really making good decisions is important. Hi.
What steps have you taken to prepare yourself for this position, if selected?
So, I've talked to several people. I'm new with politics, so this would be something that's new, but I, I read a lot of books. If there's something that gets brought up, and I'm not comfortable with the topic, I will do my own research, I will study. I'll look at all the factors in the matter that's at hand. I've kind of read, obviously, what the procedures were going to be like tonight, through the whole application process, and even in the future. So, if I do get this position, I plan on running again, so I'll be looking into knowing what that takes to get my seat back on a reelection.
Did you watch any council on TV?
I have watched on the Mason Web TV that council streams.
Okay.
So, Trent, can you specify a difficult group that you've worked with, and how you've gained cooperation from them, how you handled that, and what the outcome was?
So, one thing that we do with my companies, we volunteer at different religious services. So, right now, there's actually a threat against the Jewish community in the Tumwater area. So, every week, we're out there with those guys, and we have actually had to deal with some of those guys that don't like that group of individuals, for whatever reason. The best thing that we have found is, number one, to keep them separated. Number two, is to let those guys rant, even if it's not necessarily appropriate, hear them out. Again, staying calm is the best way to approach any situation. Obviously, asking for help if you need it. We're not afraid to get other guys involved. But a lot of it comes down to how you treat the individual. If you take the time to hear them out and say, "Okay, I understand why you're frustrated, but you still can't do this," that usually will calm them down a lot, and that's what works best for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you describe a time when you had to choose between doing what is right and doing what benefits you or someone you know?
That's a really good question. I think that, I think that's something that occurs every day. Running a company, I think that there's a lot of times where I could take the easy answer and say, "Oh, I don't want to go in and train this guy, because I'll still get paid," or, "Oh, I'm not going to go do this task, because I can have this person do it." I like to get involved, I like to be hands-on. I want to know what's going on with people. I guess that's, sorry. A little nervous.
I was pretty excited to see another grunt running for council. It's always fun. So, what is Shelton's most pressing challenge, and how would you like to see the council address it?
Oh, I think, for me, the most pressing challenge is going to be the homelessness in the community. I think that that's something that has been growing, at least in the time that I've lived here, I've seen it increase a lot. Just anywhere from living situations on the side of the road to trash on the streets, there's an increase, and we've got to do something that's effective in figuring out, not just moving these guys out of here, but figuring out a reasonable solution on how can we get these guys in the area to stay, that's not going to just push it off and make a problem for another community.
Hi.
Hey.
How would you handle an inside or outside pressure to vote on a proposal in a certain way?
I handle stress and pressure very well, so I feel like if someone was trying to pressure me into something that wouldn't work well for them, when I'm taking into consideration making a decision, I'm going to take into considerations all factors, again, the totality of the circumstances. We're going to look, who does this affect? Why does it affect them? How does this affect me? How does this affect all of us? What's the best decision to be made for the community, not for the individual trying to pressure me?
Thank you.
All right. So now, we'll go into...
Round two.
Yeah, round two. Extra questions that the council may have for you, so. Anybody?
Joe, which has the hardest ones, we'll let him start first.
I'll start off.
Deidra, how about you start off?
Trent, would you tell us what inspired you to apply to serve on council?
Yeah, absolutely. There's a couple of things that inspired me to run. I own a home in the historic district, and there's been a lot of construction over there that's been beyond frustrating for some of us homeowners. We felt like we didn't have a say in what was happening with our properties and where we lived, and watching some of this project go on, I've, I watched the entire street get laid and then tore back up. And as a taxpayer, that's frustrating, because that's money that's coming out of all of our pockets. I saw stuff that could have been better planned, I saw stuff that could have been done more efficiently if we had just taken a half-step back and said, "Why don't we try this?" There's a lot of stuff that I feel I, I could have a good opinion and voice in. Again, I know logistics pretty well, planning, I know how to take in everyone's, you know, circumstances, I like listening to people. But the biggest reason is frustration at first, but then, I started thinking about it, and I wanted to be part of the solution, not the problem. I didn't want to just be the citizen complaining. I wanted to be able to come in here and sit down and say, "Hey, guys, this is what's bothering me. What can we do about it?" I don't want to just be another guy sending emails or making phone calls. I've got two kids, they're both going into the Shelton School Districts. I'm growing with this community, my business is growing with this community, and I want to be part of the growth of this community.
Sometimes balancing the city needs and citizen needs is hard. How would you handle that in the, your decision process?
Again, the biggest thing I think would be communication. It's always communication is so important. Talk to the people that it will be affecting. It's, there's, it's always hard to put aside your own personal needs, but that's not what this position is. This is supposed to be something that you're selfless with. You're supposed to be helping the citizens of your community, not yourself. So, probably just taking the time to really listen to what their needs are, why they need it, the concerns, and just making sure that they're taken care of.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do you believe in tax breaks, or do you believe in the incentives, or do you believe in either one of them?
I guess I believe in both, depending on what it is. I believe there should be incentives for certain businesses that are growing. I think there should be breaks for certain businesses that are growing. I think if you're helping your community in volunteering and giving time and effort, there's always, there's always a time and a place when it's appropriate.
Tell us about a recent unpopular decision that you made, and what was the result?
So, it's kind of a small one, but we started recently, we changed our uniforms a little bit at work, and we're requiring everyone to wear ball caps, and some people just really don't like it. It was really unpopular. We had guys really, like, ready to quit because of a ball cap. So, what we did is, we just explained why the uniform was the uniform, why we were doing it the way we were doing it, what it looks like, and just explained to them, "This is why we're doing it, and this is what it's for," and that solved ninety-nine percent of it.
I hate ball caps.
I do, too. I wasn't a fan.
I've got another. So, Trent, you talked a little bit about businesses growing, we also have seen residential growth. How do you think that the city, what, what challenges or opportunities specifically can a city play into as we look at growing as a community?
I think there's a, I think there's a lot of growth to be done here in Shelton, not only for businesses. We can start with residential, most, I mean, sixty-five percent or seven percent of our residents are renters, from what I've read. I mean, we need to build more homes that people can buy, because it's, it is a growing issue. We're having more and more people move into Mason County, because it's affordable living. You know, with Olympia just being right up the road, we have a lot of people coming from there as well. We've got to start expanding housing businesses. I welcome any business that would like to open in Mason County. I believe there's an opportunity for anybody that's willing to work hard here.
Why do you think there's a shortage of homes here?
There's a couple of reasons. One would just be because of the, the growth in the homeless population that I've personally seen at some of our more remote sites and in the area. I would also say, just because of friends and family that I have in the area, it's very hard for them to find housing, even to rent. Most people that I know that are looking to move into this area are just looking to buy houses, but, you know, I know a lot of people here, even some of my friends that are realtors, are saying that it's slim pickings.
Okay. Anyone else?
We heard your top issue, what would two and three be?
Two and three? Two is definitely the schools. I have kids going to school now in the Shelton School Districts, so education is always really important to me. I'm a volunteer at Choice High School, and I mentor kids in my free time, so I think that, you know, the number-one thing to... in the Shelton School Districts. So education is always really important to me. I'm a volunteer at Choice High School, and I mentor kids in my free time. So I think that, you know, the number one thing to solving some of the issues we have as a community is getting a step ahead with our kids and our education, making sure they know that it's very important to be doing this stuff. It's easy to blow it off when you're young. They need someone that can, can be there and actually show them, "Hey, this is why it's important. Don't make these mistakes." So that would be number two. Number three is probably going to be, for me personally, some of the roadwork and construction going on in the city. Again, just with some of the frustrations that I've had in the past, I want to make sure that no other community members are as frustrated as I was at that point.
Thank you.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trenton. Now, we're going to take a short break, or how about a long break?
About 15 minutes.
Okay. 10, 15 minutes?
So we'll return at...
7:20. 15 minutes, 7:27.
Thank you.
Quick math.
Math.
Good, Kathy, how are you?
What steps have you taken to prepare yourself for this position if selected?
So, I'm really excited to see the rebound that's happened on our city's website. The information's a lot easier to find now. I have done my due diligence and researched the council handbook. I took some time to read through that and understand it and make sure that I was a good candidate for this position, that I could deliver on what is required in that handbook. I also took some time to make sure that the vision, mission, the strategic goals of this council and the values that you all have put forward for our community align with my vision, mission, and values and goals for our community, and I thought that was a really good match. I, my dad was a labor leader here in the region for thirty years. I started my civic engagement down in Gray's Harbor, back when we had plants closing down there and whatnot, when I was about four years old. So, along there, I worked in the community. As a young person, I was a page at the senate. I've always had a passion for being a local elected official, and I'm really excited to learn more about how I can bring value to the council and our city and our constituency.
Do you, second part of this question, do you believe it's important to be out in the community amongst the business owners, in neighborhoods with the homeowners?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, my neighborhood of Hillcrest, you know, when I moved there fifteen years ago, it's a neighborhood that, you know, I mean, we were called DOC Hill when I moved there. And I think that my neighbors and I have been able to, I mean, Eric, with his work putting the, you know, getting our Shell station back, you know, in order up there, all that makes a difference in how we show up, how we improve our homes, how we communicate together, you know. Half of my neighborhood is Latinx, you know. I talk to my neighbors. I get out there and figure out what we need to do to make sure that we're not DOC Hill any longer and how we take care of each other. I can say that I can do better in our, our community and around engagement, you know, with our local businesses and whatnot, and that's why I'm here today, so that I can do my part.
Okay, thank you.
Megan, can you discuss a difficult group whom you've had to gain cooperation from? What that process looked like or how you handled it and what the outcome was?
Sure. So, when I started at the Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council in two thousand and fourteen, as the Strategic Initiatives Analyst, my role and responsibility was to help our region and this county onboard what we call the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. It's a federal act with several different required core partners who pay into the workforce system, required partners, and other partners. And that includes PAC Mountain Workforce Development Council, the Adult Dislocated Worker Youth Programs. It includes all of our community colleges, including Sound Learning for our adult basic education and literacy programs. It includes what we call Wagner-Piser, which is our education, or Employment Security Department's Labor Exchange Program, as well as the Department for Vocational Rehabilitation and our DSHS partners with the BFAT SNAP Program, Timberland Regional Library, Labor and Industries, Labor Apprenticeship, Carl Perkins, and our Career Technical Education Programs amongst many, many, many different partners. And my role is to bring all of those folks together to talk about our current state and how we operate our workforce system as a whole, as well as talk about what our future state was going to be. So, I brought them together to do strategic planning, and I helped write the strategic plan for the Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council over about a year. And that was conducted by about eighty folks on a regular basis to facilitate them through change management.
Can you speak a little bit about the methods or techniques that you used throughout that process?
Sure, sure. So, part of the methods that, first and foremost, good old stalking. I did a lot of outreach and engagement and relationship building to make sure that the essential partners were going to be at the table so that we could have a robust conversation about what works, what doesn't work, what, what needs to be in the gap to fill, and what we could fill the gap with. And what that takes is a lot of what we call human-centered design. So, whether that's laying out, using tools like Rosebud Thorn. I don't know if you all have ever had a chance to do Rosebud Thorn, but it's a really quick process of putting sticky notes up on a board so you can make quick decisions together. I've done lots of different change management processes around literally doing simulation, so operating poverty simulations so that we all, as leaders, understand what it takes to get through our community, is to find out the resources, whether you're a job seeker, you're a homeowner, you're a business. I've got a lot of different tools in my toolbox to be able to help the council and the community work through different work groups.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. All right. You're doing fine. Your nerves seem to have calmed down. Can you describe a time when you had to choose between doing what is right and doing what benefits you or someone you know?
I really pride myself on being extremely ethical. I, I guess an example would be, my husband worked for a security company for many years, and he would pull permits from the county and the city for like SPI projects, you know, all the school district projects, all the new buildings. He pulled, you know, permits for all of those, for the security systems and whatnot. And if I were on this council, if I was a leader in this, in this group, he works for Department of Corrections now and planning, so he doesn't pull those permits any longer. But if I was here in, in this position and we were looking at like permit rates, that is not something that would cause me to make a decision on rates because my husband is here doing business with the city. I, I really am for the collective impact. I, I am in public service for so many years and, you know, helping operate our workforce system because I'm here for our communities and our people. There's not much that I do in my professional life that isn't for the greater good.
Very well, thank you.
What is Shelton's most pressing challenge, and how would you like to see the council address it?
Whew, let's take a look at that. I want to rebuild Main Street. I think that we have a great opportunity and to affect a lot of things, you know, around our youth and resiliency, health and housing, our homeless issue, and it starts with our business community. I think that we have a very unique opportunity here to build a Main Street that truly reflects the vision and mission of this council and our constituency here. And how, how do we do that together? How do we bring a coalition of so many different partners to help entrepreneurs, you know, the, the Chamber, the EDC, the City Economic Development Partners, the County Economic Development Partners? We are on the cusp of some really, really cool things, I think, here, not only with the city and with the, with the county, but we've got to fix some of our zoning stuff. We've got to make sure that there's space and connectivity so that we can bring more business here. And with more business, we've got more employment. We can actually get our housing, you know, to the situation where it needs to be. So, that's, that's really, I think, what, what we really need to work on together is economic development. And, you know, for the long term, pie in the sky. I want a splash park. I skated roller derby for a long time. I want a roller rink, you know. We, we need some more opportunities for our families to be able to enjoy our city and be, be proud of it. What we, what you all did and what we all did for Christmastown USA was amazing this year, and the feeling, the thoughts and feelings that come out of that, how do we, how do we move forward with that momentum?
How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. You kind of answered this question and the mayor's question. How would you handle inside and/or outside pressure to vote on a proposal in a certain way?
You know, I'm not easily influenced. I come to the table for our constituency, for the voice of our people, and for the entities that help grow our community. And I'm going to take a look at the data. I'm going to take a look at the facts. I'm going to take a look at the comp plan and figure out, you know, where, where were we trying to get, and I'm going to help make the decisions that help get us to that end goal and that end state. I'm very eager to, to see us as a whole move towards there because once we get there, then we open up so many different pathways, so many more different resource opportunities. And then, you know, that's how we build hope together, too. That's how we build community pride.
Thank you.
All right. Well, now, we're going to open it up for follow-up questions from the council. We have a lot of time. So, anybody want to go first, Joe?
Tell us about a time when you used your leadership ability to gain support for what initially had strong opposition.
Well, I'll use my example, the life that I'm living right now. So, I mentioned that when I started working for the Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council, that my role and responsibility was to bring on that new federal law. And so, that, that, in fact, for those of you that don't know, our workforce system is governed by our county commissioners. So, there's, for each county commission in Thurston, Lewis, Mason, and Gray's Harbor and Pacific Counties, the commissions appoint one of the commissioners to sit on the governance body of the workforce system. And they provide authority to the Workforce Development Council, which is the business-led board. And that, that business-led board, in fact, completes what that, that commission has asked, asked the local folks to do. And in that is such a very complex system. That Workforce Development Council Board, they procure what we call a workforce operator. It's a, it's a third-party entity that that board cannot influence, so, because there's so many different contractors and so many different partners in there. And I've been sitting in a change management position with the operations team for the last year. And prior to me coming on to that operations team, we were stuck in a quagmire of tar. Nothing was moving. We have a lot of folks who have worked in the system for quite some time, who have not been fully supported. So, I've taken the time to go around each one of the offices, create relationships with frontline staff to make sure that they feel supported. I've helped the operations team form a system supervisors functional team from multiple different funded partners where we're operating as one. It doesn't matter what program we're funded under. We work now as workforce, whereas a year, year and a half ago, no one would even announce themselves as workforce staff. It would be, I'm Megan Feese and I'm with the Thurston County Chamber and I support workforce. Now, what it sounds like is, I'm Megan Feese and I am the Workforce Business Solutions Project Manager, and on behalf of the Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council, me with my partners, we deliver this. And that's a big deal because that's never happened. And where we've been stuck in change management and how we do, how we do a better service delivery to our local constituency, like our workforce Mason that's up on the hill by McDonald's, we have, we have a lot of work to do in that. We, we've been working very hard on that system in aligning integrated service delivery so that we provide the talent pipeline that the business community needs and that we're making sure that we're matching the services that each job seeker needs as well. And honestly, our system has not always done the best job of that, so we've been working really hard to shore that up, and I'm proud to say that I'm part of that change management team, and I've really helped move that forward. I actually came out of committee meetings this afternoon, and we were very, we were all celebrating because we, we're, we got, we got some ticky marks on the, on the work plan.
So, you, you talked about rebuilding Main Street. What would be a couple of things that you would directly want to see, like us as a council be able to do affect that? Let's not go any more than three.
Yeah. I'd like us to take a look at our demand industries and occupations here in the county and in the city to figure out how we guide those businesses or entrepreneurs into businesses that maybe are part of the supply chain. You know? How do we bring businesses in to the city that build on other businesses? So, that's, that's one thing. And a second thing is, I think we can do better marketing. You know? I think that we're not taking advantage of the fact that we are the gateway to one of the best mountain ranges and, you know, scenic drives in the country. You know? I think that we have made huge strides, huge, huge strides in the last several years under some of our new leadership in our economic development. And I'm excited to see, like the Passport Program, right? We had that, we had that awesome Passport event that happened this last September. How do we, as a community, help support and grow that? You know? We have, as a small county and, and a small city with a growing constituency, we have an opportunity to bring more folks into the fold to help move those things along. So, what, what would it look like to have a business that took that over? You know, that's, that's driving more tourism recreation here. That's more people that get to see what we have to offer as a city. So, that's another thing that I'd like to see. And then, you know, we're ma, we're making amazing strides also with our K-12 system and bringing back career technical education. And how do we tap into that talent and make sure that they know that this is a place to stay and grow their business? We have a lot of talent that we're shipping out of here. So, how do we retain that and make sure that they have pride in Main Street as well? Those are the three things that I would see is, you know, how do we, how do we build from what we have and grow from what we know?
If I could follow up to Jim's question there. Megan, could you give an example of one specific policy or program you think that the city could explore that would enhance a Main Street revitalization?
I think that, as far as programming goes, because I need to do a lot more research on policy and procedure, I have to be very honest. I've read through it, but I don't know. I haven't done, studied it to figure out exactly where the gaps are, to help see if there are current policies that need to be maybe relooked at and revised to help, you know, make sure that we have an opportunity for growth there. But programming, you know, continuation of the next steps of the real rural development initiative. We have had three years of, a ton of our local leaders go through there, you know? We're talking about, what, sixty, eighty folks? How do we keep that alive? You know, we have some thriving community efforts here that have, you know, started and stopped a little bit, and so, how do, how do we, again, bring them back? You know, I, I know that folks are dispersed in their, you know, individual desires into the different community-based organizations, and I really want to see what we can do to build some action teams. And from the, from that, I think that's where the programming comes. So, I know that we have some small business development that we, you know, with SPD that we do, but I, I want to say, I'm a, being a small business owner and a, and a consultant, I think we have a lot of consultants here and small, like entrepreneurs that we can build some clubs, you know, build off the clubs that we, or the existing programming, programming that we're doing. But ultimately, you know, I would have to do more research. I'd really have to take a look at the policies and, and I, I, I'd want to do that more in a team, I think, and hear more from the community, too.
Thank you. Kelly, did you have something?
Yes, I do. So, we know that to have a healthy business, healthy businesses in our city, we have to have some healthy housing that just goes together. So, tell me what low income means to you, affordable means to you, and workforce means to you as far as housing goes?
So, let's start with the affordable first. I think that we need to empower our developers to be able to develop housing, but we, I think that we also need to be thoughtful about that and make sure that if we're building workforce housing, that it's really hard to get a developer in here that is going to build low-income housing without having that full, like, funding to do that. So, if we're going to attract a developer and we're going to build affordable workforce housing, we have to figure out how to support and allow for a percentage, like if we're going to do some more apartment complexes and things like that, what is the acceptable percentage of those units being low-income and then the rest of them being affordable?
Okay.
All right, Megan.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I would move to extend the regular meeting by an additional hour and a half to comply with our protocol manual.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I broke, he said two hours or seven hour and a half. We can always extend it again.
Poor thing. Just take a gun and shoot me.
Do you need more water?
No. Take a gun and shoot me.
She's had enough.
I've had enough water. No more water coming out.
A half hour seemed to go so fast. She was talking so well.
Good evening.
Hello.
All right. Marilyn, please present your credentials for the open council seat and why you are the best candidate.
Credentials? I take it you don't mean my PhD, although certainly my work in rhetoric and technical communication has been useful in most of the work I've done. I think I'm a good candidate because I have a wide background in city and county processes and people and issues. I believe a connection between city and county is really important, and I think I could facilitate that. I am adept at computer work, websites, spreadsheets, data gathering. I've had courses in law, so I can read legal documents. I guess I have accumulated a breadth of experience and skills through teaching and university administration, through volunteer work, the research I've done that would be useful. I have designed and carried out and analyzed focus group studies. I've done complex data analyses of PhD completion rates based on funding type and department, so I'm familiar with data. And I suppose the ethical use of data, which is a tremendous concern of mine. I've been committed to working in Shelton since I moved here almost nine years ago. I volunteered on a number of committees. My basic belief in life is that I have been given so much by mentors and teachers that I need to give it back, and I see that by being done by my bringing skills to a position like council member.
All right. So, now, we're, we're going to have questions from each council member, and we'll start with Eric this time. Sorry, buddy.
Marilyn, how would you handle inside and/or outside pressure to vote on a proposal in a certain way?
I vote and have voted in every election since I was old enough to do so, as I saw fit. I do my background research. I read, I talk to people from as broad, broad a spectrum as I can, but I vote as I believe, given everything I've accumulated, I should vote. If I were pressured to vote, I would say something like, well, I'm glad for your opinion. I will certainly consider it. Tell me why that should be, and certainly would consider arguments from inside or outside because I believe gathering information is important. But I would vote as I concluded personally was best for Shelton and the people who live here.
Thank you. So, what do you feel Shelton's most pressing challenge is right now, and how would you like to see the council address it?
I kind of suspected something of this sort would come about, and this comes from, from history, not as long as some of you, I'm sure, but like I said, nine years. And I have seen, over those nine years, so many projects begun and not completed. We had to return money for grants that we had been given that we did nothing to promote. We had a Safe Schools Grant that someone had applied for, but it was not followed through on. We had a grant for a park and ride that was begun but not finished. We had a poverty task force that recommended a continuing committee on follow-up. I was on that committee for several years, but with a change of administration, there was no staff time and, and that continuing committee dissolved. I see this over and over. There'll be plans, there'll be commitment, there'll be money spent, and with the turnover of people or staff or issues, things get lost. I think the council is a much better format than the commission, and I worked hard for that change. But the city somehow needs to get on track to follow through with things. I was, I was reminded of the proposal several years ago. We were ready to submit a grant to the EPA to assess brownfield contamination, and the commission pulled back on it. We'll visit it again in September. It never came back up, and I was reading just recently about Gray's Harbor completing their three-year cycle of assessment and EPA grants to do the cleanup. With all the problems we have, whether it's homelessness or lack of affordable housing or vacant properties along First Street or whatever the problem, there needs to be resolved to put together a plan and commit to it and follow through. Not really. And I guess my feeling about that would be that I don't imagine coming up with a choice between benefiting myself or an individual, a child or a friend or something, in which I couldn't work out some way of addressing it that I felt was ethical and right and that also brought benefit. I've never bribed anybody to get my kids in school, no.
Sometimes, you know, we have to make pretty tough decisions up here.
Absolutely. We do.
You get pressure.
I understand that.
Okay.
So, Marilyn, can you specify a difficult group that you had to garner support or cooperation from, and how you went about that process and what the outcome was?
Well, this will sound odd. This is kind of a note for all of you up there. I have been aware for some time that the county public health department also serves the city of Shelton. By state law, public health serves the entire county, which includes Shelton. And I've also been aware, because of work with the Housing Coalition and Area Agency on Aging, that not much cooperation existed. And I recall when we shifted to council, and I don't know if you remember, the election where there were 15 of us running initially.
I do.
And the city got together and put on an information session for all of the candidates. This is the way the city runs, this is what we do, and we were given a chance to ask questions. And my question was, what is the level of cooperation, communication between the city and the public health department? And the answer was nonexistent. And so, I'm now on the Housing Behavioral Health Advisory Board, which is run out of public health, and Eric shares that committee with me. I'm grateful for city participation in that, but it seems to me that, and forgive me for this, the commission and to some extent the council, although I have great hope for this, is really reluctant to work with the county and particularly public health. And I keep reminding people. So, that's my difficult group that I'd like to get some cooperation from, that I would like for much more participation on the part of the city with public health and with, I guess, the county in general.
Thank you.
You have to have some thoughts as to why that is. So, why do you think that is?
I haven't thought, well, I have, and it may be staff, but I know, I guess in general, what I sense is kind of this is my territory and that's somebody else's territory. And I've run across this in the county, and it may be something that's more prevalent. But I remember when I was running for office, the first time I went up to North Mason Talks, I think was the group in Belfair. And I said something like, "Well, you know, Shelton and Belfair are joined at the hip." And, "Oh, did that raise eyebrows." We don't have, you know, it was kind of like, "Oh, they're another part of the world." So, it's, I don't know what it is, but it's worth thinking about.
We do have a council member on the Board of Health, Mason County.
I know that, yes.
Me?
Yes, and I've seen you at the meetings. I've been there.
Anyway, so we do have some connection. Anyway, my question, and I know you kind of touched on this as you were opening your statement, but what steps have you taken to prepare yourself for this position if selected?
I guess I started preparing for it when I first joined the Park Recreation Advisory Board, like, three or four months after I moved, although really, it was when I registered to vote and got my library card. I have volunteered for a number of organizations. I, for a long time, attended almost every city commission meeting. I haven't been as attentive to the council because I have more faith in a council forum than I did in the commission. But I have talked with people. I have, like I said, served on city committees. People in the second floor of this building know me because I've been around. I have read up on issues that come up and paid attention to what the city is doing. I've commented, as you all know, a number of times before the commission and a bit before the council, but I stay informed. I did a lot of doorbelling and meeting people when I was actually running for office on a ballot, talked with people about issues. I'm part, I'm a friend of the chamber. I don't have a business, so I'm not a business member, but I'm a friend of the chamber and have attended a lot of those business after-hours and events. When we have all the tents up in the middle of the city for the bite of Shelton, I wander through town and talk to people and harass the folks with fiber optics that we really needed up on Capitol Hill. But I don't know, I pay attention. This is my home, and it's where my effort focuses, and...
Thank you.
Give a specific example of a time when you had to address an angry person, customer, constituent, et cetera. What was the problem? What was the outcome? And how would you assess your role in diffusing the situation?
You mean angry at me or simply angry at a situation?
Roundabout is the worst idea ever. People are going to crash in it every day.
Oh.
They'll never figure it out.
I love the roundabout, by the way.
We're wasting our money. Why? How would you address that?
As an example.
By the way, we've never heard those criticisms.
Generally, I address things with data and information. There was a lot of anger over the garbage contract.
I remember that.
And what I did was collect information about what other people were doing, and I read the legal language and talked about options with people that came to me. I know there's been a lot of anger about water rates, sewer rates, utility rates in town. And I, again, I look at what other communities are doing. I did a long study of my own water usage to figure out what kind of average consumption was, and I actually had one of the staff members be kind of upset with me because I was arguing for a much lower level of consumption before the rate jumped up. And so, I took my data and I presented it, and I took examples from other cities. So, I don't yell and scream at people. I try not to argue emotion, but I'm a data person, and I'm a policy person. And when I taught freshman comp, I told my students, "I want you to learn these rules backwards and forwards, black and white, so that you know exactly what those rules are and you know how to follow them, so that you can break them with effect." And I guess that's my approach to policy. Good policy is important, and if you can bring policy to an argument and data to an argument, that's one part of it. But the other thing I say is, if I'm saying something that absolutely doesn't make sense to you, explain why, and maybe we can talk further about it. It was like, if I give a class, an assignment, and you don't think there's any use in it, tell me that. We'll talk about it. And if, you know, if you can't convince me it's a good reason, if it's just, "I've got to give them something to do while I take a break," we'll change it. So, it's data, policy, discussion, asking for input about why.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so, excuse me, the last step in this interview process is the opportunity for follow-up questions from the council. So, anybody have a follow-up?
I'll give her an easy one. So, Marilyn, I know some. How many boards and committees have you been on in the city of Shelton?
Oh, my. I've been on...
Thirty seconds or less. No.
Park and Recreation Advisory Board, the Library Board, Lewis Mason Thurston Area Agency on Aging, and with that, I was affiliated with the State Council on Aging. I was briefly on the Housing Authority Board. I was on the Shelton Poverty Advisory Team. I worked with the Visioning Committee. I met regularly with them while they were working on implementation. It wasn't really a board or committee, but I volunteered in the Police Department for I'm on Housing Behavioral Health Advisory Board. I'm on the advisory board for coordinated entry. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Civil Service Commission?
Pardon?
Civil Service Commission.
Oh, thank you. I'm on the Civil Service Commission. We have a meeting coming up Thursday.
Hi.
Kathy?
Yes. So, I know that you're concerned about the housing in Shelton and Mason County all over. Can you tell me your opinion on low-income, affordable, and workforce and the difference between those three, and the importance of those three in our community?
Affordable housing is based on a model of what can be paid at a level of income relative to the average median income in the county. And so, Commerce, four years ago, did an affordable housing inventory and figured the median average of Shelton, and they came out with an affordable housing number for the county of $247,000, which didn't seem to me affordable, but somehow, that was what they put in their report. There is a standard definition of affordability that says a household should not have to expend more than 30% of its income for housing and basic utilities. A huge percentage, and I want to say 50, although that's an intuition and guess, kind of, 50% of the households in the county are what they call cost burden with housing. They're paying more than that 30%. This becomes important when you consider workforce housing because you're dealing with the difference between a living wage and a minimum wage or an average income. Workforce housing is generally lower-priced, and I, you know, I don't know the dollar brackets. But workforce housing is essential if you want to build your economy. People absolutely have to have a place to live, and if they're in that lower bracket, commuting at any distance is expensive and time-consuming and impractical. So, workforce housing is critical for economic development. Low-income housing is at that bottom end, where you take, well, low-income, very low-income, where you take people who are on minimum wage, possibly part-time, possibly seasonal work, possibly unemployed and then employed, unemployed, health issues that keep work from being steady, single parents. As we work now, many of those people who have housing depend on housing subsidies from state money that comes back, our transfer tax. I know I ran against Gary Krantz, but I was told in one of the interviews, "Well, you agree with him 75% of the time. Why are you running against him?" But I will forever be grateful for his comment in a commission meeting that we need three and four and $500 a month rentals in Shelton, and that's not going to happen from the private That's the big difference between low-income housing and either workforce or affordable or executive housing. Workforce housing can be supported by market-rate housing. Low-income housing cannot. And it's lack of low-income housing, lack of small units, lack of single-room occupancy, and I'm glad to see that ordinance up in front of you, lack of one-bedroom apartments that really create the housing problem. Does that address your question?
Yes. I just have one little tag-along on that one. I know that you've talked about tiny homes, other than what we're doing for our veterans.
Yes.
What's your thought on, can you share your thought on tiny home villages around Shelton, how that would work?
I'm not sure I want to think about tiny home villages, but at one point, the city was thinking about, working with a former commissioner, on a plan that would take a single property and allow one sewer hookup for three tiny homes on that property, which seemed to me a really good idea because you won't have the population density in three tiny homes that would be any greater perhaps than a family with four or five kids. I don't know whether that's still on anybody's radar, but I think that would be more advantageous than a tiny home village.
Okay.
There's another concept called, what is it called? Cottage homes, I think it is, but where you've got maybe two or three lots, and you build small units, not tiny, but maybe 300 or 400 square feet, with almost as if it's a community within a community, that also makes use of smaller homes on city lots.
Okay.
Maybe if Shelton Hills ever comes along, they can build a tiny home community as part of affordable housing, but I don't know where that stands on anybody's radar either. I think probably not in my lifetime.
Thank you.
If you hear anything, please let us know.
I certainly will.
I have one. Marilyn, you spoke a little bit about the relationship with the county and how important that is. Can you speak specifically to what you think the city can do as an entity and in our role as the council to strengthen that relationship or to leverage those partnerships? How can we improve that relationship? How can we improve that relationship?
I don't know how often any of you actually sit down with the county commissioner and have coffee at Uraco, or how many of you see an issue that you think is impacting the city that you'd want to call up Sharon or Randy or Kevin and say, hey, I want to get your thoughts on this. I think that would be one thing that could be done, and it may be happening. I think it's really important, given the legal responsibility of public health for the city, to work very closely with them. I would like, and I know you've been a member of that board, I would like to see in your council reports where you talk about meetings you're going to, I would like to see a report from some of those meetings you attend that may involve both city and county. What's going on in public health? Not just, oh, I went to this meeting, but tell us what's going on. What's going on with housing behavioral health? What are they doing to help keep the council and people watching and the newspaper aware of the fact that city and county are working together? And I think that would help.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
You've got two more minutes.
Okay, well, thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
All right, George, excuse me. Please present your credentials for the open council seat. Why are you the best candidate?
My name is George Blush, and I'm the Executive Director of 5XL Shelton, the only pet food bank in Mason County. We've successfully fed hundreds of animals every week through our organization. I'm also the operator of Nida's of Shelton, a little coffee shop on railroad, where we provide all the pet food to the community from right there. I've been a lead volunteer with the Saints Pantry for various different, played a lot of different roles there, from security to fundraising to social media, or whatever the case may be. And I help out with the City Pound here. I try to make sure that all the animals get properly adopted and make sure that if they come in in bad shape, that we take care of them. And that's a lot of what I do.
All right. Now, we're going to pitch you with some questions from each council member. Was it your turn or Joe's turn? I think it's Joe's turn.
All right. Good evening. Give a specific example of a time when you had to address an angry customer. What was the problem? What was the outcome? How would you assess your role in diffusing the situation?
I have an incredible one for you. I work at a coffee shop counter every day, every morning from eight to two, that's what I do. It was about six months ago, I'm going to say, there was a group that comes in, like, okay. The one woman, I know she's visually impaired, she's a regular there, and she comes in and she knows what she wants on the menu, so we come down and I start the regular banter with her. And this woman sits down with them, and I assume it's a part of the group, and she goes really loud, "You have a bathroom?" And I was like, "Yes, ma'am," you know, and I had my friend help her get to the bathroom. So I go up there and I start talking with the rest of the group, and they take their order, and I get their food and their drinks, and I completely forgot about this woman that's in my bathroom. And then I'm bringing them their food, and this woman screams from the back, "You're having napkins in your bathroom?" And I was like, "Whoa." And it just, like, it was like that, like, it was so loud in the room, it stopped everyone, and we all looked, and I'm like, "Oh, okay, we'll get on that." So she comes walking out to the front, and she sits down with these people again, so I'm like, "Oh, okay," she's with the group, I'm like, "Hey, can I get you some meat?" She's like, "I'm just going to have water." I was like, "Okay, that's fine," you know, it happens, people just want to have water. And then she looks to them next to her and she goes, "Ooh, those look good, can I have one?" And I'm like, "This is normal." And the woman kind of looks at her like funny, and she's like, "Okay." And the other woman goes, "Oh, did you get onion rings?" She's like, "Yeah, those look fantastic, can I have one of those?" And she's asking these people for all this food. And I look at the one woman, and she's kind of, and I said, "Is she with you?" And they're like, "No." It's like, "Are you kidding me?" And they're like, "No, she's not with us." I'm like, "Excuse me, ma'am, you know, please stop asking my customers for bites of food off their plate." And she's like, "Why, what's the problem?" And then I hear, I have a woman who does bagging for me for 5XL who comes to hang out at Nida's sometime, and I hear her go, "Oh, my God." And I said, "What's going on?" And I kind of walked to the back, and this woman had bleach wiped my entire bathroom, light bulbs, handles, everything, had taken everything apart in the bathroom, and there's stuff just strewn about in there, and she's like, "Ooh." So at this point, I understand what I'm dealing with, I'm like, "Okay, here we go." So I go over and I dial 911, and Shelton PD is fantastic, you know, but this is happening right now, so, you know, even the response time from where my shop to here isn't that great. So this woman starts screaming out, and she's like, "Who are you calling, Shelton PD?" And I'm like, "Listen, can you just please, you know, step out of this store?" "Ah, I know Lawson, he works for me, I work for him, I'm undercover, and we're going to take you all down." And I'm like, "All right, yes, ma'am, thank you, and can you just please just head on out the door?" She's like, "I'm going to do whatever I want." She bangs on the table, and I was like, "Thanks, and you have a great day." And she runs out the door and takes off. So I sit there, and the police show up, and they come in and they tell me who this woman is, and unfortunately, she's related to a prominent member of the community. And she's like, "So you want to trespass this person?" And I'm like, "Uh." And he's like, "Well, listen, bro, I'm going to tell you a little secret." He goes, "I'm actually related to her too." She goes, "She's the family nut, and so it's okay to, you know, trespass this woman." But no one in the store ever saw me sweat or thought for a moment that everything, they were like, "Dude, I don't know how you did that." He's like, "You never even got the look off your face of the smile, and you dealt with every one of them." And the officer was like, "Dude, that woman has freaked out and hurt people in a few different stores, and she actually went off and assaulted someone that had a restraining order against her, and she got to go and visit with my wife that evening in a car each day." So that was one of the situations, just in the last few months, that I've had to deal with, with a difficult customer.
Wow.
Main street.
Next. Hey, George, how are you?
Good, how are you, Dad?
I'm fine. What steps have you taken to prepare yourself for this position if selected?
I've always taken an active role in my community. I go out, I speak to people every day. I know what people want, I know what needs to be done. I'm in the middle of downtown all day. I talk to the people. They come in and tell me, there's people sitting in this room that come to my counter all the time and talk to me. And they know that I know people, I know how things get done around here, and that I've built relationships with community leaders everywhere. Most of you know me, most of you have, you know, been to my restaurant, eaten, you know. I've built relationships, and I continue to do that to this day.
Do you feel it's important, when you are preparing yourself for a position like this, to find out as much as you possibly can about how the city government functions?
Absolutely. Last year when I was campaigning, I met with a lot of you guys, I spoke with you about different things, and I showed up to a lot of meetings, and I came here and I learned a lot of things, and if I wasn't here, I was watching it at home, you know, and I was always paying attention, and I always had, you know, always knew what was going on. I've always known a lot of the different things that have been going on here for quite some time now.
Okay, thank you.
George, can you discuss a difficult group that you've had to gain cooperation or support from, and how you went about doing that, what the outcome was?
When I came into the food bank over here, we had an overwhelming population of people who were high on drugs and whatnot that were coming in, and they were rather aggressive towards the volunteers, and it scared a lot of the families and whatnot away over there. So when I came in there, that was something that had to be addressed immediately, because, you know, if we have nobody coming in, and the people that are coming in are all high and sketched out, it's like, are we doing a service to the community, or are we just, you know, helping a problem? So they started sleeping across the way from us, in front of the pantomim cleaners there. The police came out one morning, and they roust everybody, and they were like, "All right, you guys get out of here, you got to move." And I went out there, and I was like, "Hey." And they were like, "Hey." They're like, I says, you know, "How can we, you know, work together here so that we can make this maybe problem get a little better? You know, if you guys work with me, I'll happily keep them off the side of the road if you guys will help me to, you know, when there's a problem, to show up." So Chief Moody came out. Back then, it was Sergeant Pence, they came out, they met with me, and they said, "All right, George, here's what we're going to do. If you have a problem, you call us, and we'll get here quick." And I was like, "Okay, fair enough." I can't count how many times Officer Sierra came down there and had to drag different drug addicts and whatnot out, and she's about yay big, and these drug addicts are a little bigger than here, and she would muscle them out the door. But over time, they learned to stop coming in there and being aggressive. What I did was, is I said to them, when they came in, I says, "Listen, here's the deal. If you come in here, you're going to want to come in here again next week. Now, if you do something today that's going to create a problem for you tomorrow, then are you doing yourself a service by acting a fool and screaming? You're not going to get anything, you're going to get put out, and you're going to have to move on with your life. And then you're going to get banned from here, and now you're killing yourself for the long term." So what we found was that people started realizing when I would stop and talk to them instead of being combative with them, "Hang on, listen, man, before you get angry, think about what you're doing, and let's try to work together, you know, what's going on?" And then they'll explain to me the issue, and then we get things rectified. So the biggest problem I had was that, and now, if you look at the food bank's numbers, we have 150 families coming in now, and it's not 50 guys that are high on meth, you know, with the homeless card. So I've, you know, done a lot of that, and I get that at my counter a lot, too. Like I said, you have certain people that are just always going to be there, and you have to deal with everyone.
Can you describe a time when you had to choose between doing the right thing or doing what benefits you or someone you know?
My business is something from out of the stone age. Small, little family restaurants like this, they don't, they don't work anymore. They don't make, you know, obscene amounts of money, they don't make you rich. This is something that you do for love of the game. It gives me a home base to do what I love to do, and that's helping the community, and it gives me like a foundation for that. I don't make any money with what I do. I do everything I do for love of the game. And there's a lot of opportunities out there, there's a lot of different ways, you know, especially when you get involved in things like politics and whatnot, there's always special interest groups and whatnot that'll come and talk to you and all the other different things like that. But you have to stay true to what your, you know, what your original game is, and that's how.
Okay, thank you.
So, what do you feel that Shelton's most pressing challenge is, and how would you like to see the City Council address it?
We've got to clean it up, we've got to clean it up a little bit. I, as a business owner downtown, I, you know, I understand that we need to have services somewhere, but I think we need to figure out a place somewhere where they're all kind of more condensed, and we need to get people off of Railroad Avenue, this big monstrosity of, you know, people that come there, you got clouds of smoke, you got, you know, different issues that are going on, and, you know, I get to watch drug deals from my front counter more often than not, I can tell you the two cars that pull up every day, and then the little old lady who comes over and goes and hands all the baggies on. This is my reality, you know? That's something that we need to work on, we need, because if we can clean that up down there, and we can get it, I mean, if we just get it off to one area or something, I mean, but we have everything so spread out, so you have all these different people that are traveling from different places to different places, and it's just creating chaos in its wake. You have a house up over by Guadalajara there, I live up in that neighborhood there, dude, and what happens is, is they have what they call the meth trail that comes down from behind Shelton Alfredo's and goes up my block, and then they break in half the cars on my block, and they cut around by Bordeaux, and then they cut through your yard over there, and then they make that mess. And I mean, I think we need to figure out a way to do better, you know what I mean? I don't know what we're going to have to do. I've always thought sprinkler systems, but unfortunately, people frown upon that. But we got to come up with something better, because just having them there isn't helping. That's one of my biggest problems.
What's going on, George?
What's going on there?
How would you handle inside or outside pressure to vote on a proposal in a certain way?
Something I've learned is that people are always going to pressure you one way or the other, no matter what's going on. I've seen it a lot, you know, when I first started 5XL, I used to get angry hate mail from people that were saying I was enabling people by giving them free dog food. I had people call me up, tell me what an idiot I was, and how would I do something like that. My wife is in law enforcement, do you know how unpopular that is at the food bank? People, I've always faced a lot of different, you know, adversities like that, people have always looked, I was a, I'm a Cuban kid, Cuban Italian, I grew up in Harlem. We had a whole different way of life there than they have here. I've faced adversity more often than I haven't, and I kind of like it that way, hence the reason I think I'm here again.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, at this time, we are going to open up for questions from, follow-up questions from the council. Anyone want to go first? Anyone? Anyone?
All right.
Oh, he's got one, all right.
He's trying to describe the most challenging negotiation in which you were ever involved with. What did you do, what were the results, and how did things end up for the other party?
Back in New York, I used to work in the fire suppression industry, and that's a very interesting world. When you go into New York City and you do business with large corporations, they tend to believe that they are above the law. So sometimes you'll go in there and you'll say, "Okay, you haven't replaced anything of your fire suppression hardware in 15 years. Your hydrostatic testing is every six years, you have a 10-year maintenance, six-year maintenance, all these different things that need to have been happening over the last 12 years, but you just keep polishing these old fire extinguishers, and we're going to hope that they all work." So, but in New York City, my job was to write down everything that I found, so I spent a lot of hours writing down all this information about this one particular large company in the city. And at first, they didn't respond to our quote at all, they were like, "Nope, get lost, we're not getting any of you." So then, I happened to be on a test with a fire marshal that was in that area for Con Ed at that point, and they walked up, and I was talking to the guy, I was like, "Oh, you know this building over here?" He's like, "Oh, yeah, I got to go check that building next week." I was like, "Oh, yeah, you know, they haven't changed anything there in years." And he was like, "Really?" And he went up to that floor, and he'd never been on that floor, just because the way the building was set up, and he was like, "Oh, my God, no one's ever been here." And he looked at none of his own fire marshals that had ever checked anything up. So they called us up, and they were very, "Oh, hey, listen, we're willing to talk." And I was like, "Listen, you know, there's always negotiations, there's always some kind of way we can meet at a happy medium." And they kept humming and hon, and the fire marshal went back and closed the office down. So now, all of a sudden, they want my boss to show up immediately, they give us a call, and here I show up at 8:00 in the middle of downtown Manhattan, and they have fire marshals and fire department all outside, everyone's kicked out of the building until I get there to put up new fire extinguishers. So it wound up working that if they would have just done what they were supposed to do in the very beginning, they would have saved themselves $6,000. But sometimes, you know, you have to kind of make people do the right thing, because in those buildings in New York City, we've seen what happens in the devastation that can happen if you don't have everything properly secured and taken care of.
What maybe I'm looking at is, how do you get to yes? How do you get somebody over that hump, the person who doesn't want to put in fire suppression in their old building on railroad? How do you get them to that point of saying, "Yeah"? Or how do you get the business owner who doesn't want to put in a Knox box on the outside of their building? Because you know from a life safety standpoint that those things are important, right? Especially if it's a public place. So how do you get them, how do you get them to yes? What's your secret sauce?
There's got to be some kind of incentivizing, you know, there's got to be something like, "Okay, if you, you know, maybe get together with your neighbor and get a Knox box or something like that, you know, maybe something we can work out, maybe..." There's always different discounts and that sort of thing, I think, that we could work on. There's a lot of different, there's always a, you know, you got to be willing to compromise. That's something that, a word that a lot of people unfortunately don't understand very much of. I've learned to compromise, I have three children, and some of the best negotiating skills I've ever pulled off is getting my eight-year-old to go to bed at night after he just gets home from boxing, you know, and he just had his protein, he ate a bunch of chicken, and now he's ready to go do push-ups again. "Come on, Dad." "All right, man, how about, you know, tomorrow we'll go out and we'll run a couple laps, but not today." You know, you got to compromise, and that's just always been the way for me, you got to figure out a way that without selling your original... I've learned to compromise. I have three children. And some of the best negotiating skills I've ever pulled off is getting my eight-year-old to go to bed at night. After he just gets home from boxing, you know, and he just had his protein, he ate a bunch of chicken and now he's ready to go do pushups again. Come on, Dad. All right, man, how about, you know, tomorrow we'll go out and we'll run a couple laps, but not today. You know, you gotta compromise. And that's just always been the way for me. You gotta figure out a way that without selling your original self, compromise in order to accomplish a common good. Because sometimes, things aren't always black and white, unfortunately. There's gotta be a way. If you look at politics, everybody says, this is right, this is right, this is right. It's not always that way, though. It's a lot about perspective.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Eric's got one.
We heard your number one. What's your number two and three priorities for the city if you're selected?
I see more people coming into the city and doing things. I think we need to make tourism a little better here. I mean, more events and that sort of thing. I mean, just stuff that's gonna bring people here, like the Christmas time here in our community is fantastic. I tell you what, everybody's business is booming, everybody's doing great. And right now, we're all starving. Every one of us is, you could pitch a cot in my dining room for right now until about a couple more weeks and then tax time comes and everything picks back up again. But, you know, it's just, need to figure out some way to bring more people here in the beginning of the year, I don't know. Things like that, promote tourism. And then, third thing, I think we need to improve the waterway over here. Like Oakland Bay here, I think we could do a lot more with that. I think there's some areas over there that we can, you know, we could have some kind of boardwalk or something out there. I think we need to bring more, that is just another way to bring more tourism here and whatnot and more people. And you got all these people in Olympia, you see they're stacking them on top of each other over here. Every time you turn around, there's another apartment building getting built over there. People are gonna wanna go other places to eat than the same five restaurants they have here. So if we have like a boardwalk life and stuff like that. Pards Bounty. And then, you know, your restaurant, hopefully when that gets open with the, you know, that sort of thing, we got them all going downtown. Hey, I'm, I like seeing restaurants open downtown. I'm seeing them fall down there and I, breaking my heart every day. You know, I'm seeing my friends go down and I'm like, ah, what happened? And they're like, wow, we thought, and then, you know, I run bare bones, like this time of year especially, you know. And I, you know, you keep everything to a minimum and you do what you need to do and you save during the goods time so that when you hit the bad times, you know, you make it through. But we need to figure out a way to just kind of increase the tourism here. And because people in Olympia have money, because you see their commerce is moving there. We need to start bringing some of that here. And more tax money means we can get more police, more parks cleaned up. We can get Borough Park back.
All right.
I have one. George, you talked a little bit about, you know, cleaning it up. What does that mean to you? And what specific policies or programs do you think the city should take on to get where you think we need to be?
I have an unpopular idea that I've spoken to a few people about along the way. I think we need to restrict services to people with active warrants. I think that's something the city needs to start at least beginning to look into. A lot of people don't like that idea. Because then you just, you know, you can look at, oh, it's a prejudice or that sort of thing. If you have an active warrant here, I don't think that we want you walking around on our streets. We want you riding the bus with my grandmother or sitting at the park bench next to my kids. If you have an active warrant, we just, I don't think it's a good idea that you get services here. And I think that's something that we can start with. It may not, it's not gonna be foolproof, it doesn't work perfectly, nothing does in the beginning. But if we start working in that direction, then maybe the criminal element will find their way away from here. I have a couple of people that come to my restaurant every day that have different mental health issues. And they come there to eat and they don't have money all the time and that's fine. And I don't, you know, if they have money, great, if they don't, I don't care. But those people there, I understand. I understand that they're gonna be homeless just because it's just the cards they're dealt in life. But the people that are, wanna use my bathroom, that are leaving meth baggies on the floor, that are, you know, wiping my whole bathroom down with, you know, bleach wipes or whatever the case may be, I don't want those people here. I don't think that anybody does. I don't want them stealing, you know, things from the stores next to me. I mean, how many days do you sit here on, we all see on Facebook how different stores are getting ripped off all up and down the place. Most of the people that work or come into my restaurant are armed just because they know, you know, what kind of, you know, risks they're taking coming around there. I mean, across the street, if you look at the benches, I could show you a thousand pictures in my phone of the different that we have that hang out there. They dump garbage and do drugs and whatnot. It's my reality, you know? But we need to get that off of there. We need to figure a way to do that. And I think by discouraging criminals from coming in is a really good start.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, George.
Thank you.
Public comment.
Getting steps in today?
Yep.
Okay, I'll hold it up for a little bit.
Are you ready, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yeah, just give Eric a minute.
What's that?
Nikki founder people.
Oh, I know. She's been being very good.
Kind of thought about this all the time. This is gonna be such a long night. I think I got myself worked up.
Remember that, you waiting for something?
Okay, we're gonna go to our general public comment period where people can get up and talk about or support a candidate. So Donna, do we have any signed up for public comment?
Yes, we do. We have Mike Olson.
Mike Olson.
You can sit at the desk.
Yeah, you can sit today, don't.
Mike Olson, I'm a city resident. I was mentioning to Donna earlier, I think this is the historic moment in Shelton's history that we've never appointed a candidate or a council member. And I think you guys did a great job. I liked your questions, I thought you handled it well. City administrator put together Ronex program. I would have liked to have heard more budgetary questions. That was lacking as far as how people would spend money that we give you and just to see what the priorities were and things like that. But I think you had six really good candidates and I think any of them would fit in real well. But I will advocate for Marilyn Vogler. I think of all the candidates, she's got the depth and the breadth of experience that very few of them had as far as she's attended many, many meetings. I've seen her here for years at county and city. She's very well-known and respected in the community and I think she would do a great job. And I, once again, appreciate what you've done here. It makes me glad I was one of the advocates for a seven-member council. And this makes me feel really good for the city that we have a group of people that will take this on and do a great job like that, so thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else?
There is no one else, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, now we're gonna move into our executive session to discuss the qualifications of an applicant or candidate for appointment to the elective office. The executive session will last about 30 minutes and there will be action to follow.
We will return at 9:25 PM.
Thank you.
Deidra?
We'll give you 30 seconds to spare.
Perfect time.
Are we ready to go?
Yeah, well, mic up.
Thank you. I'd like to open up the meeting again.
And at this time, I would move that we extend the meeting an additional 15 minutes to conclude business this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Get situated here. Where's my next one here? All right, so council members, please state your preferred candidate's name.
Mr. Mayor, if we just would like to give each of the council members the opportunity to express their.
All right. You wanna go?
Kathy wants us to stand.
I do.
I wanna thank everybody who applied for the council position. There is a lot of talent in this room and I really enjoyed hearing everybody's comments today.
Thank you all for showing up.
So for me, too, thanks, everybody, for, I know this is an easy process for everyone, so I appreciate you.
And just on behalf of the council, I'd like to express my gratitude. We had a wonderful showing this evening. It was delightful to see that we had so many people willing to step up and continue to engage in our community in new ways. And I hope that however tonight turns out for you individually, you'll continue to be a part of the process and help us, help all of us make this a better city.
I wanna thank you personally, each one that applied for this position and the knowledge that you came forward with. So I just wanna make sure that we appreciate your time and your effort. Thank you.
Last. It's a commendable, admirable thing to want to serve your community for basically no pay and no benefits. And to do it for the reasons that you all have shared with us, which are all the right reasons. And that makes me feel really great that Shelton has people like you and willing to serve and willing to integrate into the community and do things to make this better for everyone, not just a select group or yourself individually. And that is something to be very proud of and something that I know we are all very proud of as a group. So thank you regardless of how decisions get made tonight. But thank you and please stay, stay in touch with us and stay engaged in the community. Because that's how things actually make traction and move forward, so thanks again.
All right. So now we're gonna go into our voting part. So council members, please state your preferred candidate's name, one at a time. We will begin with Councilmember Schmidt. The first candidate who receives four votes is appointed. If no single candidate receives four votes in the first round, the process will be repeated until a candidate receives the required number of votes. So, Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. My choice this evening is Ms. Feese.
Hi, next.
That's it, right? Okay.
My choice is Ms. Frazier.
I would choose to appoint Megan Feese.
I choose Megan Feese.
I choose Frazier.
I choose Marilyn Vogler.
So we have. Mayor and council, no candidate has received the required number of votes. So we need to repeat the process again. And I would suggest starting at the opposite end of the table at this point.
Opposite end?
Mm-hmm.
I'll stick with Marilyn Vogler.
I will stick with Frazier.
I will stick with Megan.
I will also maintain my vote with Megan Feese.
I'm keeping Ms. Frazier.
Maintain my original decision.
That's the same vote for the second time. I think we'll need to repeat the process again. If there is no change at this point, we will need to restart the process. The entire process.
At a different date?
Yes.
I will change mine.
Okay, we'll start back down here with Joe.
My original, Ms. Feese.
Tanya.
Megan Feese.
Megan Feese.
Megan Feese.
I don't think it matters.
No, that would be four votes. And Ms. Feese has been selected as our candidate or as our newest council.
Right. All right, again, thank you all for coming. Yeah, do we wanna photo with Megan?
Yeah, I think we should, should get one, so if you'd like to.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all. Thanks, all of you.
Come up front, probably, if you all wanna see him.
Yes.
Hold the gavel.
We're friends.
I have shorts, I have to be in the front.
Man down, yeah.
Let me take these off.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, I'm all nervous, my hands.
That's all right, congratulations.
We are, too.
Thank you so much, thank you. Yes.
We'll see you next Tuesday?
Yeah.
See you next Tuesday.
Welcome aboard.
This meeting is now adjourned.